Good evening, everyone. The time being six P M. I will, in place of the mayor, be conducting the meeting tonight. And so I will call the meeting to order at this time. And I would like confirmation of boasting for the meeting.
Meeting notice was posted on Monday, August fifteenth at Hometown East Hurdle, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item is item number two, approval of the agenda. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that issue? There being no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as posted indicate by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We have an agenda. Then the pledge of allegiance and could I ask Linda Clark to lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number four, public comments regarding items which can be affected by city council action. And we have one individual that has signed in. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak at this time? Seeing none, then I will grant the floor to Ty. Ty, would you pronounce your last name and where you're from, please?
Ty Ballroom, four, six, oh, eight Pendleton Court, Janesville, Milton, Milton School District, Janesville Water District. And I guess I'm, I got a map here for you guys. I don't want to wreck it. I'm just gonna leave that on. But it's so funny. I got it from Rock County Plan Department and it should be hanging somewhere. You should be able to see Rock County. Milton's a big, big city that isn't there yet. They're the big city north of Janesville and they got land all over the place. If you look at the city of Milton, you know, high hills on the east side, high hills on the west side. If you go out by the trail out by the school, you can see three or four water towers from that direction. And it's not, it's not, it's not keyed in. If you look, if we were to build up instead of out, you know, we have the smart growth plan in all sorts of places. And they say, hey, we got a smart growth plan. But how it works together is exactly how the D N R is filed with the Enron Chemical Company. Everybody has identified, there's more chemicals that we, at the E P A and administratively, but they'll never come to the light of day. And you know, the two actually compete against each other, kind of said. I believe that Milton's probably the only game left. As far as cities, as far as independent development. And I would just make that whole Koshkane on one big park. Two thousand thirteen came with the Supreme Court decision, the biggest wetland fight in the history of the state of Wisconsin, in my opinion. And that was two thousand thirteen. That was called the Koshkane District on that. And they said legally, you can zone. City government jurisdiction can zone, not just wetlands, but trails. So you can have Trail Association and a Wetland Association. And right now, the D N R says, hey, go ahead and hook up to our eleven hundred miles of trail system. You know, the one out here that doesn't hook into Janesville yet? And Janesville, no other planning and development is hooked to that trail either. No plans to hook up that forty mile trail still not hooked up in Janesville. And that's pretty regular for the state because once they actually propose something and do it, they let it go and then it's done. And who owns it? So to try to hook to their trail system, unless you're gonna get money, it doesn't make sense because they don't run it. They run it the same way as Enron. The public hearing goes to Jennifer, the clerk's office, and then what? That's where it dies. It's proposed that way. They wrote two briefs. Anybody that ever read a planning brief can read these briefs. They're that simple. And I want to give you a copy of that. I call it the page five. Where they've rewrote manufacturing techniques, not once, but now this is the third time. And then the D N R, this for Milton, Enron, or Invonic, I'm sorry, that will run it the third time. And basically, when they do that, they've renamed everything that you would write as factual, one way or the other. They promised a public hearing, but I talked to the guy today and he says, we set it up after the public hearing time, after the forty-five days. I said, well, how's that work? We'd have to ask the attorney. How's that work in court if you show up after they judge the case? Not very well, I would assume, not very well. Well anyways, the other piece is the E P A, right from the E P A newsletter. They say chemicals are bad and they're worse than we thought. And then so you gotta put them all together and then, you know, hire an attorney if you want to do something about it. It's insane. The D N R is supposed to work for the plant development of the, of different cities. They don't bring any tools to any of them games. Here's research on the riverbank. You can actually read there. They say riverbanks are dropping out up underneath them because of pollution. And on how the planet actually absorbs heat and how that will go to the cool wet places. So you know, the idea that it's gonna get any different, somebody has to make it different. The only game I see, honestly, is Milton. I've been to Geneva, been to lots of other places. The only independent developing game is Milton if, whether or not you guys play it or not. And the only thing I can say, you already got it mapped on your maps, on your newsletter. You show Highway N and fifty-nine hook up. And if you look at fifty-nine going down, that's where it hooks up and everything above there is all wetlands. You guys could turn that into a big wetland park. You got a wetland park on the other side of twenty-six. It's not interactive. You know, it should be, we should be hooking up the golf course to people and allowing maybe electric golf carts to use that trail. That's one of our most, you know, the second most famous trail in the state of Wisconsin. So you know, you know, I can't believe that they're gonna, they basically, on what it says in this letter, is that they forgive the chemical companies. And they forgive all manufacturing. If you're manufacturing and making money in the state of Wisconsin, we forgive you. It doesn't matter what pollution that you got. As long as it's not creating, you know, some new monster in the ground. And that's true. And we don't tell the people that. And too often, that's why you see no crowds at city council meetings. It's not just the city of Milton. That's all city council meetings. So I hope you guys keep your planning really sharp and make some improvements. Actually, try to hook, if you hook up the back, what I call lot lines, and you'll see it from the backyard. And then you can hook up these, these different amenities that, you know, nobody, they're not, they're not in design, they're not telling, you know, well, it's Al Heulick or anybody else in planning. How come we don't see designs in smarter building? How come the internet is used against us? And we don't get allow anything to the point where we think rocks are bad in the water.
Ty, thank you very much for your comments. I'm gonna, as I said earlier before we started, I'm gonna try to hold you, hold you to the five minutes. And we appreciate your comments, sir.
Well, I thank you, but you really should set up a public hearing for Invonic, the chemical company, because the D N R isn't doing that. And it is promised for requirement.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. We'll go to item number five then. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion at all on that? There being none, I will call the question. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Item number six, and I wanted to bring this up and then I know Al will fill us in on it as well. So discussion and possible action regarding commercial facade improvement grant applications. And this is correct for two, two, three and two, three, three dash two, three, seven Parkview Drive.
Thank you. So this is a request from Stockman Property Investments L L C, I hope I got that right. To redo the facade of the large brown building, which is kind of historically known as the Bullis Building. This property has been recently, recently purchased. And as part of that, they would like to remove the nineteen seventies, eighties metal facade. And return that building back to its nineteen fifties, earlier, earlier, nineteen fifties and earlier facade of the traditional masonry and windows. This went before the Plan Commission earlier this evening for a site plan review. Site plan reviews within the B three zone district are within the purview of the Plan Commission. And on tonight's agenda, there are essentially two facade grants. This, although it looks like one building from the street, it is two separate parcels, which is why it has two separate addresses. And based on the program guidelines, although the property may be even attached or under the same ownership, as long as it is a separate parcel, they can apply for grants for each parcel. And then we've seen this at a couple of occasions on College Street and over on Merchant Row as well. So on the agenda this evening is two facade grants, one for two, twenty-three and one for two, thirty-three. And they will work in concert together as shown by the pictures. And we joked about this at Plan Commission. It's ironic that the after picture is actually a picture from the nineteen fifties. But that's the intent of the, of this renovation is to return that picture to its, its former, or return that property to its former stature. And they would be applying for two facade grants, which will tackle the project in concert.
Any discussion at all from council as to the information presented?
Only that I've been waiting for this day for a long, long time, since that's in my mind, the ugliest building in town.
I think it looks pretty good. Nice to go back to the original roots.
I think it's gonna look really nice with the winery and the Milton House. I think it's just gonna offset the whole square.
Thank you for your comments. Is there a motion come forward from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve both facade grants, not to exceed ten thousand per application.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve both the facade grants as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed, please indicate by the same sign. Hearing none, the motion is carried. Thank you. I could. That's a very good idea. Is there an abstention?
I abstain.
Thank you. So the motion was passed with five, five yeses and one abstention. Correct. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding modified Edgerton Fire Protection District. Ten, the ten municipality intergovernmental agreement. This is the modified I G A, correct?
That's correct. So if you recall, back on July twenty-sixth, the city of Milton, along with the participating four townships, mutually agreed and adopted the intergovernmental agreement that would essentially effectuate the consolidation of the two fire departments. During a subsequent review of that document by the other, the current or original five members, there was some suggested language changes that would incorporate aspects of the previously approved M O U and petition into the I G A. So none of the language that has been added into this revised I G A is new language. It's just being taken from the petitions and the M O Us and, and put into the I G A in order to create kind of a more accurate historical reflection of the processes that took place to get us to this point. With that being said, those changes are of a substantive nature, although they don't necessarily change anything within the agreement itself in terms of roles and responsibilities and, and future obligations. It does change the documents enough to the point where with review of the attorneys felt it was appropriate to have the municipalities reapprove this I G A. I know that tonight Fulton is reviewing it and, and likely approving it. And that's where Chief Pickering is at. And the other municipalities have it on their respective agendas. So it's our turn tonight to review those red line changes to that document and make a motion to hopefully approve this version as well.
Thank you, Al. Any discussion about the redlined items on the document as presented?
I would move approval of the revised I G A.
Second.
And if I can just suggest wording, just so that it's clear on the record with that, if I can just volunteer that. Similar to what you indicated, if there'd be a motion to approve the Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services Agreement, Edgerton Fire Protection District for the ten municipality intergovernmental agreement as revised.
Exactly what I said.
Okay, I thought so.
And the second.
Thank you for all the clarification. I'm not going to repeat the entire motion. I'm just going to say, as presented, I'm looking for a motion, I mean, for a vote. And all those in favor of the current presentation item indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by same sign. Okay, we have a motion to approve the modified I G A as presented. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen. Authorizing. Sir, hang on. I lost my place. Forgive me. Authorizing, oh yes, authorizing resolution to Urban Forestry's grant and the Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Sewer Programs.
So this is somewhat of an annual process, or at least it has been since I've been here, where the city of Milton applies for an urban forestry grant that allows for us to do a variety of urban forest related activities, tree removals, tree replacements, expanding our current G I S system to help better track and develop our tree inventory system. It's one of the reasons why we continue to be a Tree City USA for the last several years. So this resolution would be for an application for the Urban Forestry Grant for the year two thousand twenty-three. This is a matching grant and we generally include the requisite funds in our budget process through our various line items related to trees and, and other open space cost centers. So city administration would recommend approval of twenty twenty-two eighteen, resolution two thousand twenty-two eighteen, to apply for the Urban Forestry Grant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding these grants?
I would like to just make the motion that Al just stated.
I'll say it.
Motion has been made and seconded to, if I can read into that, to approve resolution twenty-two dash eighteen. Is that correct? Thank you. And the second is for that? Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by same sign. Thank you. The resolution has been approved. The next item is, we'll talk with Kelsey. Turned off my microphone. We'll talk with Kelsey. Kelsey, anything you want to share with us regarding the financial statements?
The July financial statements are attached to the agenda. There's any, no red flags and nothing out of the ordinary. So be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Kelsey? There being no questions, we thank you for all of your work and we appreciate it. Thank you. Item number ten, discussion and possible action on nonprofit contribution policy. You had the policy in our minutes attached to our notes and information sent us. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Just, just quick, I did just send out an email to the copy that was uploaded to the agenda. It doesn't look like it uploaded quite right. The red lines weren't there. So I sent out just an updated copy so you can see the red lines a little bit better.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that the red lines weren't showing.
Yeah, essentially what I, what the red lines kind of outline is, is, I don't want to say a strengthening of the nonprofit contribution policy, but it's, it's really a requesting of additional information from each entity that applies. So the council has more information and is better prepared to understand kind of the organizational goals and the structure of the organization. For example, asking for a strategic plan and requiring those entities that do receive funds to periodically update the council as to how those funds were used and what would be the, you know, what their plans are as the year goes on. So those are really the, the, the major changes to it. And then there were some housekeeping matters referring to the city treasurer as opposed to the finance director and whatnot. So.
Appreciate that. Adding that reporting back kind of approach, I really think that's helpful to know how those dollars were utilized and specifically, you know, benefited the organization that received the funds. So that was my thought. Thoughts or questions about the policy? Is it something we can all live with?
How, how will we make it known to the organizations that they have additional responsibility?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think what we will do is in the event that, if the council approves this, we can send this nonprofit policy to those entities that have requested in the past. And in the event that there is a new entity that requests this year, we'll provide them with this information in advance of their presentation to the council. Typically, we ask for submittals to be provided to us by August thirty-first. We've revised that to be September fifteenth. Understanding that there will be a gap in time between September fifteenth and then likely the second meeting in October when they would present to the council, we could provide them with this information during that interim period.
Would this be applicable to those currently receiving funds or those that apply for next year?
I believe it is, it's my understanding that it would be for those who apply in future years. Mainly because the, the date in which the update would be requested has passed in the year two thousand twenty-two. So.
But we could give them a copy so they're aware of what's coming.
Yeah, we will.
Got you. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure if they didn't backtrack that they had.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. It would be in effect for this year's budget request, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's what my thought process was in discussing updating them. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion, if there is one.
I'll make a motion to approve council policy number four, nonprofit contribution policy for two thousand twenty-two.
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further comments? Okay, hearing.
I have a quick question.
Yes. Go ahead, Anissa, I'm sorry.
It's not, it wouldn't be like a policy that would just be for two thousand twenty-two, though.
Oh, thank you. No, I didn't catch that. Great.
That's just the way the document is titled, two thousand twenty-two update. Yeah.
But it applies from this time forward.
So I'll remove the year two thousand twenty-two from my.
Just the policy itself.
Yeah, just the policy.
Is that clear? Okay, for the second?
Yeah, that was how I understood it. So that's fine.
Okay, so all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by the same sign. Motion carried. The policy has been adopted. Thank you. Item number eleven, committee reports. Any committee reports at all?
Okay, just a couple of things for Parks and Rec. We are going to be replacing the wooden benches at Splash Bad. One of them's damaged and had to be removed, so we're replacing all of them. We had continued progress on the disc golf signage. And then a couple of dates to remember, October fifteenth, ten to noon, and October twenty-second, ten to noon. That's the prairie seed collection at Cross Ridge Park and Tower Hill Park, respectively.
If I could ask a quick question, thank you.
Sure.
With those benches, because there's so much water, water, constant water there, right? High exposure to water. Is there any thought of using recycled plastic boards instead of wood? I'm just throwing that out to you. I'm not saying you have to do that.
So what, what we're going to try and do, I need to circle back with Paul Smith. He's our operations crew lead. He was going to reach back out to Blackhawk Tech because their welding class had actually made the black metal benches that are around there. It's the wooden ones that we've been having issues with that are deteriorating. So we're going to circle back with Blackhawk Tech, see if they can make those again. But if not, then we'll look at purchasing them from, from a company.
I need to recycling and I thought also they handle the water better. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you for not asking a question on the prairie seed collection because that I'm not as well versed on.
If you'd like, no.
I've got a historic preservation update. So we met as well. And the main topic of discussion was the, an ongoing history tour series we've got going on. A history walking tour in town. We've partnered with roam around tours to do different tours throughout. And they've done a couple already and there's more coming up. So there's a Milton Junction tour in September, on September seventh. There's also Milton Junction, Milton College Neighborhood on October first. And I think they've already done the ones that are pertaining to this side of town, too. So there's like three different tours they're doing. Any would you mind sending out dates, or sending out the link you sent out historic preservation to the council? They were copied? That works too. You'll see it in your emails.
I do want to just mention that I went on the first junction tour, which was this past weekend. So I would say that there were eight to ten of us. And there may have normally been more because it was just in the middle when it dried up between two rainstorms. So some people may have decided not to attend, but I thought, you know, it was pretty well attended.
And I believe cost is free. So cost is free for those walking tours.
Anyone else? Okay.
Fire commission is tomorrow night.
Correct. At six P M. Correct. Here at City Hall. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven B, we'll go with staff reports. Wow, I get to pick tonight, huh? I was gonna start with him. Mark, did you have anything? No, I guess not. Okay. We'll go, we'll go with Kelsey.
We're just working through the budget process still for two thousand twenty-three and the beginning stages of that and getting all the details in. So that's it.
Thank you so much. Why don't we go with Ashley next? Is that okay, Ashley?
Sure. Our summer reading program is winding down. We are very busy summer. And we're starting to reach out to the teachers to see how we can collaborate for the upcoming school year. The chess tables were installed at Story Gardens. That's very exciting. Again, thank you to D P W for doing that. Again, these were made possible because of a grant from the Green Bay Packers Foundation. And then our food truck rally is coming up on Sunday, August twenty-eighth from ten to two. We have twelve trucks as well as some community organizations that can have tables there. We'll also be doing a fifty-fifty raffle to raise funds for Story Gardens, as well as have a meet the artist opportunity. We invited Brady Lewick, who did the arch, Connie Beer and Heather Hanson, who did the mosaics in our pollinator garden. And Amy Leonard, who is working on the Project Maria art piece right now, to kind of be there to talk about the art piece and to kind of highlight the fun art that's in our gardens. So that's what we have. um to kind of be there to talk about the art piece and to kind of highlight the fun art that's in our gardens. So that's what we have.
Thank you for that. Ashley, I had a question. On the fifty-fifty raffle, are you open to people, uh can they buy tickets ahead of time if they can't be at the fifty-fifty raffle?
That's a very good question. We didn't really talk about that.
I mean, we could start a week ahead.
We could. So I'll look for information on our Facebook page, but that's a good idea.
Just thinking there might be people couldn't come that day, so. Chief, how about you? Can we go with you next?
Sure. Um our new officer, Pierre Miller, will be starting on Monday, so stay tuned for some press and some pictures with uh bringing him on board on Monday. We uh have given a conditional offer to our twelfth officer. She's currently undergoing all of the medical things and has passed the physical, it sounds like. And um just waiting on a couple other things to come back and then we'll start talking start date with her. Um she also had a baby between the police commission interview and the phone call that I gave her. So we'll probably give her a little extra time to stay at home with her little one and then we'll see when we're gonna bring her on board.
Thank you. Anything that you want to share with us?
Yeah, we're still working through the recruitment for the planning and zoning coordinator position. We have interviews scheduled for next week, so hoping that those go well. We're also still recruiting for a crew person position. Those applications close on Monday next week. So make sure to let everybody know to apply. Um yesterday was hashtag City Hall selfie day. So we took a couple photos outside here and then a couple up at the library as well with the Story Garden Subcommittee and a few people from Parks Migration and Linda was there as well, so. It's been a fun week so far.
Those will be on uh, those will be on the website, right?
Uh social media right now.
Social media, yeah. Thank you. That's, thank you.
Yes, we have three interviews scheduled right now, so.
So on August ninth, we had the partisan primary election. Everything went smoothly. Um we are very lucky in this name, so we have an amazing uh set of election officials, plus especially city staff and public work. So I really want to thank them for helping out. Um there was a total of one thousand one hundred and five voters on that day, or including absentees, I should say. And then on that day, we had forty-four new Election Day voter registrations. So now we are gearing up for the November election, um in which will be on November eighth. And it was only, it'll be a little over a month and absentee ballots will be sent out. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do.
Al? So we have kind of uh officially started the budget process. Uh met yesterday with our health insurance provider and we're hoping to hear uh by the end of next week what our insurance rates will be uh go- going into two thousand twenty-three. That's always a big variable in the process. Uh Kelsey and I met today and went over the very, 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 very preliminary budget. Obviously, there is still a tremendous amount of uh variables that are outstanding, shared revenue, state aid, things like that. Uh but uh based on the equalized value numbers that we received uh last week and the net new construction numbers, we could start to plug in some some real things. Good news is, is we saw sixty-seven million dollars worth of increased value in the city of Milton, which is the largest number uh that we've seen in uh the eight years I've been here. So that number continues to trend up every year when we see twenty-seven or thirty, we think that that's amazing. And then the next year it gets bigger. Uh so that's great. Uh uh net new construction was one point five four percent, which was more than double what it was last year. Uh but still not as good as it was two years ago. Uh but again, that's very helpful. That equates to about a forty thousand dollar increase to our levy. Uh but like I said, there's still a number of variables that uh y- that need to come in. If we were forced to pass the budget today, which of course we are not, uh we'd have to cut about eighty-two thousand dollars from it, which is not all that surprising. Uh you know, a lot of that will get hopefully eaten up with uh shared revenue increases and things of that nature. Uh but by the time the council sees it in October, we'll have that number hopefully shaved down to next to nothing. Last year, we came with with no cuts, so uh I think we're in great shape. Uh Kelsey's uh ahead of the game from where we have been the last couple of years. And uh so I think we're in in good position to have a another good run at the budget this fall.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Um we will skip eleven C. No, no, we will not. Anissa, did you want to introduce item eleven C, please?
Well, thank you. I just want to say this has been one of the the best city council meetings I've ever attended.
That's very nice of you to say, or or you're not talking about me perhaps. That's uh, that's okay.
Oh, I, I, well, it's very nice to sit on the uh the porch. It's a very smoothly run meeting. You guys are doing fabulous and and Maureen, you are doing fabulous as well.
So what, what did you have in mind tonight for us? I'm I'm anxious to know.
All right, so I am not going to be keeping track of anybody's responses. Um clearly, I'll leave that up to you. But here is the question. Would you rather have unlimited universal respect or unlimited power?
Okay, I'm gonna repeat that to make sure I captured it. Would you rather have unlimited universal respect or unlimited universal power? Correct?
Good luck, everyone. I I mean, I'll go first.
Okay. Perfect, perfect.
I'm gonna go with the universal respect. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go with Aretha.
Okay.
Universal respect.
Yeah, I would say universal respect.
Keep going down the road. I will say respect also.
I'm gonna go on the Aretha bandwagon.
Uh, respect.
Yes, respect.
Yes, respect.
So, so could I use my power to positively influence people to respect everyone?
See, I'm, you and I are in the same wavelength.
So I can have a good influence on people?
I hear you. I, anyone else?
Go with respect as well.
Respect.
Oh yeah, what does Mark have to say? Mark?
He's powerless.
How about our audience? Respect or power? Then I'll.
Go with power on any of the ideas.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know. I just think I would. I don't know. I need both things the opposite way. I need limited power and not universal respect because I need people with genius chat.
And me being Mr. Contrary sometimes, in a nice way, I hope, I would be both. Because I'd I'd need, I'd need the respect of the people in order to have universal power, so. You'd kind of have to have both in order to make it work, I think. But that's my opinion. So the majority, Anissa, was um respect. R E S P E C T, right? Thank you.
So what you're saying is you're gonna sing now?
Oh, no. Oh, I know. That was as far as I go, because I don't do Aretha very well. Thank you. So let's see. Item number thirteen of cor- or number twelve, our next meeting, is that date correct? The date and the time would be six P M?
Yeah, earlier this afternoon, uh Jenny did send out a request from the council for a potential special meeting next week, Tuesday. Uh we've gotten, I think, most respondents back. So uh prior to the publishing of this agenda, we didn't realize that we were gonna need a special meeting until earlier this morning. It's only for one item. It'll be very brief. We can do it uh virtually. It's just for a facade grant that they uh that they have the contractors lined up. And and frankly, I missed putting it on this agenda, so it's completely my fault. Uh but that that, so that would be the next meeting. We haven't set the time for that yet. But our next regularly scheduled meeting would be September sixth.
So there'll be a virtual one next Tuesday?
If that works for everybody, yeah. I think some respondents have indicated that they would prefer virtual, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Cool. Thank you, Al. And um we'll entertain item number thirteen. Lucky thirteen, right?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. We are adjourned uh from the common council meeting.